I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, sir.
None.
Okay, and do we have a motion to approve the minutes from November 19th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move right into our first presentation, the Liquor Board Code Survey Update.
I know you're used to a tree stand this time here.
Good afternoon. The South and the other commissioners read an article in the Cumberland Sunday Times, dated November 22nd, Commissioners Do Seek End Ban on Sunday Alcohol Sales. And there's some issues that we're mentioning here, our office, excuse me, it's Mr. Miller and Mr. Stafford, we sent out a questionnaire to some of the licensees, one of them, one of the questionnaire, the questionnaire we sent pertained to, can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir, Mike.
It pertained to the restaurants in Allegheny County that have Sunday sales for alcohol. At the present time, the law reads you cannot serve alcohol before 1 o'clock on Sunday. Apparently, there's been some interest expressed by the commissioners and perhaps other individuals to lower that period from 1 o'clock down to 11 o'clock in the morning. So we sent out a questionnaire, Ms. Follie in the office sent this out, we got the respondents back, and what we have here, we have about 75%, and I'll share these with the commissioners, okay, 75% of the respondents back are in favor of that proposal, okay. So I just want to say that the Liquor Board, we do not propose legislation, what we're going, we're trying to do here is assist you in what you might want to do, okay? It'd be up to the commissioners to make that recommendation to the delegation, any assistance we can render toward that goal will be more than willing to do it, more than happy to do it. There was a couple other issues that were discussed, I have, I do have a questionnaire, there was a questionnaire or some kind of survey that was sent out by the, from the commissioners to licensees in Allegheny County. Does anybody have the information back from that, that come back to the county as far as what those licensees want to do? There was a mention about package stores being allowed to be open on Sunday. It was sent from this office?
Yes, that was a survey sent out in August, just saying, is there any possible changes that you all would like to see? And Mike, you'd know better than me, there's 167, 57 licensees.
That's total licensees.
Total, so we, we sent it to everyone, package stores and everything, and including Rocky Gap, and that's, that's how we got that, that other one, the 18 to 20-year-old servers, that was a request by them that said, hey, they can already serve beer and wine, let's allow them to serve spirits too. So that, that came from that.
Okay, my, my question still is, what were the response back as far as the people that have package stores, was there any information, any feedback back to the county that they want to be open on Sunday? And if so, is there some kind of a number, a ratio of those in favor, is it those opposed? Is that information available?
Yeah, it's available, we had it at our, our last work session, we can get you a copy, but, but I can tell you that in total, we might've had seven or eight responses, written responses out of those 160, and, and of the liquor stores, and, and, they're not all liquor stores, because some of them are, are, I guess, markets that also serve liquor.
That's correct.
They were all, there was none opposed.
Okay, well, if the commissioners would like, our office will gladly send out a questionnaire to that effect, to the package stores requesting input back, similar to what we have right here, there's good data for the county commissioners to have as far as how many are in favor, how many are opposed, if you would, you know, plan to introduce that legislation, you have documentation here that 75% of the people are in favor of that. Now, we sent out a questionnaire to clubs, now, is this legislation going to also cover the clubs? I don't know, is it just going to be for the restaurants? The clubs we sent it to, I think 20%, or excuse me, 20 out of the 25, whatever, they were in favor of it. But I think this legislation is really tailored toward Class B and Class D licensees, am I not correct? I think that's what it was anyhow, okay. But if the commissioner would like, Ms. Follie can prepare a, just a short questionnaire sent out to the package stores, once we get that data back, we can give that, submit that to the commissioners. I'm sure you want some kind of guidance on what the general licensees feelings are on this, and then maybe that will tailor your decision on what you're going to do as far as submitting that legislation, okay?
Yeah, that's basically what we're looking for, for, from the Liquor Board, I never got anything in writing, but I, I talked to a couple of package store owners, I was sort of surprised that the ones I talked to were, were opposed to the package stores being open on Sunday, because they were all basically single operator stores, and they said they worked Monday through Saturday, and they didn't mind having Sundays off. But I told them, if there's legislation passed, it wouldn't be mandatory that they'd be open on Sundays anyway, so.
Well, I made inquiries myself, Commissioner, and that was, was just walking around, the people I know, every one of them said they would just as prefer to be closed on Sunday, but that's not the whole population and all the licensees either, so that's really not a scientific study, okay? As far, excuse me, as far as the, presently the law reads, you gotta be 21 years of age to serve alcohol, 18 to 20 to serve beer and light wine. I don't think anybody's going to get a major case of heartburn if that lay, age is lowered down to 18 years of age, okay? I think that if you're intelligent enough and have the sense to be able to serve a glass of wine, you should also, and so the board is, has no opposition to that, okay? If that's any assistance to you. I'm trying to think, there was another subject come up, I had a phone call from the gentleman from the Chamber of Comms regarding a caterer's license.
Mm-hmm.
Did somebody on the commission, okay, there's, there's the provision in Article 2B right now for a statewide caterer's license. We do have, there's a, a caterer's license in Allegheny County, it's at Frostburg State University. There's nothing in Article 2B that I could find regarding a caterer's license specifically for Allegheny County. Now, if the commission would like, the commissioners like to introduce that legislation, Mr. Rudd, you have a copy 2B, do you not?
Yes.
I can give you the page or whatever, I'm sure you, you probably know right where it is, but you could use some of those other counties as a guideline, but if you look at the different counties, they all got different scenarios on how this operates, some of them operate, you must have another class of license, in Garrett County, you're not allowed to have any kind of a license, it's a separate license by itself. So if, if you'd like to do that, that would be no problem for the Liquor Board, it would just be a matter of getting the legislation drawn up, perhaps reviewing the 2B regulation for the different counties in the state, and maybe tailor something, you know, right for Allegheny County. So, once again, Liquor Board has no problem with that, I think we're, I just can't emphasize it, we're, we're not here to really introduce legislation, we just, what we do, we get the laws, we get the books, the regulations, and once they're adopted, we try, through the assistance of the legal staff here, we try to make sure those things are, are upheld, okay? Is there any other questions that, from the South or any members of the board?
Now, just give us the information on the package stores when you can.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you. Mr. Miller.
I believe that, excuse me, I believe there was another inquiry about the 16 to 18-year-olds working in the kitchen. Right now, it is prohibited for an individual 16 to 18 to work in a licensed establishment, regardless of whether it's a dishwasher or whatever, and I think that was another category that the delegation was considering to introduce.
I believe that, that was one, the request by the gentleman that's seeking the license for the brew pub at Canal Place, that wasn't anything that was requested by the commissioners. But I, I know what you're talking about, so if you, that's something I made, you'll be looking out for, for that gentleman anyway.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your help.
I'm free to go.
I'm good. Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Hey, Mr. Westfall, just can't wait to get up here, I can tell, this will be an update on our search for public health officer.
Mr. President, Commissioners, thank you. On January 15th of this year, you authorized me to begin a search for a new county physician health officer. After considerable interaction with the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene and the resulting protracted search, we finally conducted interviews of three candidates in late August. A second interview was conducted with one of those candidates, and just before we were prepared to make a recommendation to you to nominate that individual to the secretary, the candidate withdrew. So we went back to the well, and we had a, an interview with another applicant from that first pool, unfortunately, that interview proved unfruitful. In consultation with the acting county health officer, Mr. Everly and I approached Deputy Secretary Haft of DHMH, he's Deputy Secretary for Public Health, and made a recommendation to change the focus of our search to, the law provides that we can have a, a non-MD health officer, preferably an M, a person who holds an MPH, Masters in Public Health, and believing that the, the pool of candidates, particularly the local pool of candidates, since no MD candidates applied for our search the first time around, we suggested to Dr. Haft that we refocus the search for an MPH health officer, and he, he approved that, and that advertisement is actually already on the state's website, and it will be in the Cumberland Times News on this coming Sunday, with the closing date of January the 4th. So, it's been a long road, and we're not there yet, but hopefully not too long after the 1st of the year, we'll be able to move forward, and I can make a recommendation to you.
Do we know how many other health departments are using people that have just the MPH, or?
I don't know the number, sir, but I know a considerable number of them are MPH.
Right, I would imagine the MDs getting...
Garrett County is, I believe Washington County is, a number of counties on the eastern shore that I'm familiar with.
I mean, you find the MDs for that position pretty hard everywhere.
Yes.
So we'll be, I mean, moving forward, the deputy health officer, they won't have to be an MD, correct?
Well, the...
Ideally, they would, but...
If we have, if, if we have an MPH health officer, then the law requires that a deputy be an MD.
Right.
But that individual would not have to be a full-time employee, and we could potentially even share that employee with another county.
Gotcha.
Unfortunately for us commissioners, the selection of the deputy falls upon DHMH, it doesn't fall upon your staff and I.
Yes, I, I tried to get DHMH to let me search for both an MD and an MPH candidate the first time around, and they would not approve that, so.
So there we are.
There we are. Okay, everybody stay healthy for a while.
Yes, thanks, sir.
Okay, Mr. Diaz, first item will be Resolution 15-22, Enterprise Zone Recertification.
Good evening, Commissioners, how are you?
Good.
Good. Just like Christmas comes in December, so does the annual Enterprise Zone recertification, and this year is no different. I'm gonna take a, just a quick minute, if you wouldn't mind, just dimming the lights there. Just thought it'd be a good idea if I could just kind of point out, when I say Enterprise Zone, there's, there's three in the county. This whole area right here is the gateway zone, which includes a good bit, if not all, of the city of Cumberland, it also includes the North Branch Industrial Park, the Upper Potomac Industrial Park, and the Commerce Center Park, as well as Riverside, where we currently are. There's also an enterprise zone called the Route 220 South, which is down in this area, it encompasses the Barton Business Park and some adjacent properties. Let me backtrack a little bit, the gateway zone is approximately 7,000 acres, this is approximately 300, and then our third enterprise zone is the Frostburg Enterprise Zone, which encompasses the Frostburg Business Park, the ABC Center at Frostburg State, as well as a lot of Main Street in that community. This year, we had 19 companies apply for recertification in the gateway zone, we had one company in the Route 220 zone, which is American Woodmark, it's the only company in that zone, and then Frostburg, who administers their, their enterprise zone, separate from us, but we asked the commissioners to approve them all at one time. Frostburg had 33 companies, which is an increase from 29 last year for them, and Elizabeth Stallman, I'll point out, is here tonight, she's my colleague from Frostburg, she provided all the information for us to allow the commissioners to approve this tonight. There is a press release that Ms. Reinhardt and myself worked on, it kind of outlines a lot of the highlights, in the gateway and Route 220 zones alone, the companies in those, those zones increased their employment over their base by 650 employees, and there's over $21 million in capital investment by companies in that zone, including machinery, equipment, and renovations to facilities. So it was, it was a pretty good year for, you can start to see the companies, particularly the ones in the enterprise zone, but, but companies are starting to spend money again and hire employees, which is a good thing. And our chairman of our enterprise advisory committee, Mr. Lynn Workmeister, he's been a chairman of that committee for many, many years, and he, he, he was very pleased with the numbers he saw this year, and he said, you know, I've seen a lot of up and downs in this program and with these companies in, in the county, and he said, this is really a banner year, so it's something I think the commissioners need to be aware of as you're approving this resolution tonight. The resolution itself is 15-22, and essentially, it authorizes the commissioners to offer property tax credits in, in conjunction with the state requirements for the enterprise zone program to all the companies that we have certified. Again, there's 19 in the gateway zone, one in the Route 220 zone, and 33 in the City of Frostburg zone. By doing so, you are joining your colleagues, the mayor and councils of the city of Frostburg and Cumberland have offered resolutions to accompany our resolution that I will forward on to the state for certification, that essentially, they certify every company within their municipal boundaries. So that's essentially what I'm asking you to do tonight, is to take formal action to authorize Resolution 15-22 for recertification of these companies for the enterprise zone.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Matt, while we have you at the microphone, let's talk about the importance of having enterprise zone tax credit as a marketing tool, from your perspective.
Well, from my perspective, it's, it's probably one or two in the, in the toolbox. We, we typically package the enterprise zone with the One Maryland Tax Credit. All of our industrial parks are in an enterprise zone, so if a company locates their expense, makes capital investment, raises their assessment, they will get benefit from the program for 10 years. Or there's also the option through the state to get income tax credit, depending on the number of employees they hire, so I can speak to, I know with the, when Websteron came to our county over a year ago, the fact that we were able to work with the state and package the One Maryland Tax Credit with the enterprise zone tax credit, I believe, pushed that over the edge for us. And by having that, it certainly gives us a tool that, a company with a program like One Maryland, that can certainly sway a company one way or the other. And this year, as we've talked, I mean, in the legislative session coming up, there's been a lot of talk about changes to tax credit programs and the incentive programs that the state's gonna offer, and I think it's definitely something that, I know the commissioners and I have had conversation about this, it's something that we're gonna need to pay close attention to and make sure that rural Maryland still gets programs like One Maryland and the enterprise zone to, to help us entice folks to come to our county.
Okay, thanks, Botman.
Very good.
Move on to a five-year lease addendum.
Okay, Commissioners, item four is, you know, something that's really good news, I think, for the county. Back in 2005, the Federal Emergency Management Association, for lack of a better term, landed here, needing a large facility to locate an east coast logistics center, and at that time, PPG was in county possession, and it was still in need of a lot of upgrades, and, but we were able to provide FEMA what they needed. And through time, through the 2005 and 2006, FEMA, working through the General Services Administration, decided that they wanted to stay here for another 10 years. So we were able to work with, with FEMA and the GSA to do tenant improvements to that facility to make it a state-of-the-art facility, you're talking about 525,000 square feet under roof, it's a lot of facility, we keep a full-time man on the scene to, to take care of the maintenance operations down there. But we are, let me think, this February will be February of 2016, so we are, at that point, we will be one year away from the termination of the 10-year lease that we are currently in. GSA has asked me to, to extend that five years beyond the 2017 date to get us to February of 2022, to keep them as a tenant, and as, as you gentlemen know, it's certainly is a, it's been a good, good thing for the county in terms of not only revenue, but there is a job element at FEMA, there's about 30 to 35 folks who work down there full-time, and it, so it's a win-win for, for both the federal government and the county, and it, it has provided them the opportunity to dispatch emergency supplies and whatnot when, when crisis arises, so I think it works well for them, they've recognized that, and, you know, a lot of credit really needs to go to a lot of people who aren't here anymore, I can see names like Gary Moore and Gerald Arthur, Van Sichler, guys that were around when, when we did this deal the first time, and luckily, it's worked out well for us, and they want to stay, so a lot of credit goes to a lot of people for pulling this off to begin with, but they want to stay to 2022, and I think that's a great thing for us.
Won't put out another 10 years.
Well, we're working on that.
Okay. Very good.
Do we have a motion to accept this addendum?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and item five, a second lease addendum?
Yes, last but certainly not least tonight on my, my agenda is lease addendum number two with Penmore Recycling LLC. Commissioners, as I'm sure you recall, back in 2011, we leased about 70,000 square foot to Mr. Steve Miller, the president of Penmore Recycling, and since that time, he added an additional approximately 43,000 square feet to that lease purchase agreement he has with us, and now, lo and behold, because he's looking to expand and do some other things with his operation, he needs more space. So tonight, I'm asking you to approve a lease addendum with him that will allow him to acquire part of Lot 12 in the Riverside Industrial Park, as well as Lot 10, which is about an eight-and-a-half acre parcel at the very, very extreme end of the cul-de-sac as you go out Kelly Road. And before I ask you to take formal approval on this with your permission, I'd like to ask Steve to come up and just say a few words and kind of update you on where he was, where he is, and where, where I think he's gonna go.
I thought he was going to drink some. Let me hand out a few of these, I should've did it to begin with. I'll tell you a little bit about...
Thank you, sir.
...what we're moving forward, what they're trying to do.
Thanks, Steve.
I'll leave a few up here for anyone else.
Well, here we are again, and as usual, it's a pleasure to be here, Allegheny County has been very good to us, and very, what I want to say, easy to work with. Economic Development, Matt, works with us hand in hand, every time we have an idea, we go to lunch and talk about it, and it's been a pleasure. What we have there, I showed you, is a marriage, I guess we'll call it, with Specialty Industries, Craft Core, New Pack, there are three different independent corrugating companies, two in Redline PA and one in Baltimore, Maryland. We're gonna take Penmore, hopefully, and change it from just being a recycling company to being a packaging supply facility to various industries, businesses, maybe public eventually, where we can start stock and hold programs, track control of losing material, if somebody needs a load, or we keep certain different boxes there, when they call, we ship them right across town to them, or Morgantown, or wherever it might be. With that, you know, we hope we get a new neighbor in the back, and with that coming onboard, hopefully, we'll need some more parking space. We got a lot of trailers sitting back here now, as many of you see when you go by, so we're looking to develop that little, basically, it's a parking lot back there now, it just needs probably a little more gravel in it, a few things taken out and leveled off, but we want park equipment there, and we have semis coming in with materials, as we do now, and others, we want a place to keep things in order. So that's kind of our expansion idea, we're looking to grow into a new area, I mean, we've been in the recycling business for, well, I started back in the mid-'80s, went into a lot of facilities and cleaned up a lot of old boxes and all kinds of recyclables, and never gave it a thought to say, hey, how about buying the new boxes off of us too to repackage your material, your product? So that's kind of what we're looking for, once again, thanks to everybody here. And if anybody has any questions, feel free to ask.
None, Mr. Miller, we just can't wait to see what you come up with next, you know, you've been coming in here, we've seen you now for four years in a row, it seems like, and you just keep growing, and we're tickled to death, I mean, we couldn't be happier with you as a, a business here, so.
Well, likewise, and anybody that says that doing business in Allegheny County is not easy, they haven't talked to the right people, I guess.
Well, thank you for, but our staff has to take the credit for that, so.
Thanks. Yes, sir. Thank you. Gentlemen, do we have a motion to accept this addendum?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next item is a road opening petition.
I think she just ran out.
Yeah, I thought she left. Okay, we'll put that off for right now. Item number seven, fiscal year 2016, capital grant agreement, Mr. Cool.
Yes, this is our annual capital grant, this year is primarily just the maintenance for our vehicles and facility is what the grant primarily does, which means in our budget, is a part of our operating budget, for the federal perspective, it's capital, It's already part of the adopted budget, as I said, our, our operating budget, because it does pay for the mechanics and the other personnel that take care of maintaining the facility and vehicles. Any questions on it, or?
I guess to just put that in a nutshell, for our $37,000 investment, we get $298,000 from the federal government.
Yes, and another 37,250 from the state.
Absolutely.
Sounds like a good deal.
So we're in for a 10%.
Right, very good.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion to accept this?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Roy.
Thank you, Roy. And now, resolution fifteen dash twenty-three.
This is simply to bring the Cumberland area transportation improvement plan, program into being consistent with the grant that was just approved. It's, in order to keep the plan fiscally constrained, we want to have the real numbers from the grant to be reflected in this fiscal year's part of the plan. That's all this does.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Everly, our consent agenda.
Commissioners, this evening, you have four items on the consent agenda. Item number nine, first one up for consideration, is a motion for the county to purchase five-twenty Mill Street in Levee. Commissioners, five-twenty Mill Street consists of a very small lot with a very small unoccupied structure on it. And unfortunately, the structure sits right to the very edge of Mill Street, and it makes it very, very difficult for us to plow snow. So that, that's the, the main issue that, that is, is seeking our, our request tonight to have you consider purchasing this problem, property. Item number ten is a motion to abate taxes on two properties located in the city of Cumberland. Similar to recent action we've taken, the city is acquiring these properties with the intent of having them raised to accommodate some potential future redevelopment at, at both of those sites. Item eleven is a motion to approve an amendment to the county's grant agreement with MDOT to support the expenditure of funds for the kiosk at Canal Place. Item twelve is a motion to allow the sheriff's office to accept a grant from the governor's office of crime control and prevention to support the victims of domestic violence here in Allegheny County.
Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Would you like to continue today?
If you don't mind, commissioners. Monday of this week, Commissioner Valentine and I had the opportunity to travel to Annapolis for a brief meeting at one-thirty that day with the Speaker of the House, Mike Bush. And the members of, Mike McKay and the members of the delegation lined this meeting up for us. And we had an opportunity that day to talk to him about something old and something new with respect to economic development in Allegheny County. So that day, we were joined by Miranda Kessel and representatives from Verso Mill and Luke. And we also had an opportunity to speak to the speaker about Del Fest. And as a result of that meeting, and I'm not going to cover all that ground, I'm going to ask Commissioner Valentine to cover some, some turf here for us this evening, but at the speaker's request, he's asked for us to send a letter to Secretary Mike Gill, who was the Secretary of Commerce for the state of Maryland, requesting funds with respect to the Del Fest Bluegrass Festival here in Allegheny County. Commissioners, if you'd like, I can read this very brief letter into the record.
Please, sir.
Dear Secretary Gill, in two thousand and eight, Grammy Award-winning bluegrass legend Dell McCurry founded Del Fest, a bluegrass music festival at the Allegheny County Fairgrounds. Since two thousand and eight, the festival has grown into one of the largest bluegrass festivals in the United States. What once consisted of three days of music over the Memorial Day weekend has grown into a full week of activities for musicians and fans alike from all over the country and around the world. In addition to daily performances by Dell and his family, over the years, the festival has featured such notable acts as Steve Martin with the Steep, with the Steep Canyon Rangers, Yonder Mountain String Band, David Grisman, Bella Fleck, Trey Anastasio, and the Old Crow Medicine Show, just to name a few. Needless to say, this festival has become a major economic driver for Allegheny County and the entire region. During a recent meeting with House Speaker Mike Bush and his staff, we were encouraged to contact you to assess the availability of funding to conduct an economic impact analysis of this important event in our community. The data provided by an impact analysis for this growing event is incredibly important for our county as we begin the process of completing a needs assessment for the Allegheny County Fairgrounds. Thank you for considering this request, and feel free to contact, contact us should you have any questions.
Commissioners, preference? I'd like to sign it, consider it.
Sir, after we sign this, I do need to leave because I have another meeting.
I'm guessing it's not on this side of the river.
You are correct. It's at the airport, but.
Well, I must say, it was a great meeting we had with Speaker Bush. Want to give a lot of thanks to Mike McKay for setting it up. And we were trying to bring Speaker up here, and he couldn't make it, so we took it on the road. And very good conversation with him, and he seems like he's also going to be very supportive of the Verso Mill, which they need a lot of support from the state, some relaxation and some things there. So it was a very worthwhile trip. Jake, would you like to make some closing statements?
Sure. Today, our friend comptroller, Peter Franch, was in town. He was downtown Cumberland doing some shopping for Small Business Week. And, you know, it's, it's great that the comptroller always comes out to Western Maryland, and Commissioner Valentine was with him at the animal shelter earlier in the morning. And, and one of the things that we talked about, because the comptroller and the governor and treasurer cop, they all sit on the Board of Public Works, and something that's come up is, is school construction cost overruns, basically. And, and that's, that's something that they're going to be looking at, that they've, they've kind of tasked the, the head of the, the school construction agency to, to look at ways to cut costs. And so the comptroller is, is aware of our, our issues with Allegheny High School. He's aware that, that we're kind of the poster child of, of cost overruns and, and having big, big deficits to fill. But as he said, we're not the only one. It's, it's not because that someone messed up. It's, a lot of it's due to the state and requiring some mandates that, that are probably not in the best interest of the, the taxpayer, so.
Okay, just to expand a little bit on what Jake said, with the cost of school construction, they, they have certain efficiency requirements, how efficient your windows have to be, how efficient your heating systems have to be. The cost of those additions, the Allegheny County, or the Allegheny School, will take approximately forty years of savings to get back to the original cost. And in construction, nobody considers that money well spent. So that, that's something we hope to work with them on. Other than that, we have now got a governor, a governor that knows where Western Maryland is, and he's actually going to be spending four days in Allegheny, Garrett County, some time in Washington County. The commissioners will be meeting with the governor for a cup of coffee or two early in the morning, and then we're going to walk the parade in, in Frostburg. I think it says a lot about the governor. This is his first trip outside Annapolis after going through all the chemo and all, and he made it abundantly clear he is going to walk the parade. He doesn't want to ride in a vehicle, he's going to walk to prove that his health is returning. So commissioners offered to walk with him, and he said he'd be glad to have us along. Other than that, be with the commissioner or with the governor for a couple ribbon cuttings on, on Monday, and then an evening event, Monday evening. Then again, be with him in Washington County for an event discussing his, his program for combating the heroin crisis in the state. I'll be leaving straight from that event in Washington County, going to Cambridge. All the commissioners will be at Mako Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday for the winter convention. Jake loves it because he gets to go back to school.
That's right.
And for a couple of classes down there. But it's, it's going to be a very good winter Mako. Lot of issues that people don't give much thought about. We all hear about the body cameras that the police use. One problem they're finding with the body, with the use of body cameras is how do you protect the privacy of other people? If they're wearing a body camera and walk in, there could be thirty people in that video when they're only trying to address one. They had one case in another state that was running a program on body cameras, and somebody made a Freedom of Information request, and by the time, they had to hire a team of lawyers to redact this video to make sure stuff that didn't belong in the picture, didn't have anything to do with the case, and all, they had almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars involved in that Freedom of Information request. So this is some of the things we're going to be looking at at the Mako Winter Conference. And once again, it will be quite worthwhile. Now for our constituent comments.
Commissioner, perhaps before we get to there, we still have.
Well, we don't want to hear from you.
No, no, the road opening.
Okay.
I think we did actually receive a petition, and I think you can certainly conduct the hearing. You don't need to take action.
Okay.
Pardon?
The hearing was held on July thirtieth.
Oh, we already did that, so this is take action. So that's why, yeah, so you all can take action on that.
Yeah, next month.
Or you can take action now. We already had the hearing, apparently. No one showed up and was opposed to it.
Is there any opt?
Is there anybody here concerning the road opening?
To open, then we close.
Yeah, you don't have to do it, the petition closed, so you could take action.
Do we have a motion to open?
So moved.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good. Is there anything else you'd like to say?
No, that's fine.
Good, that's good.
Keep it straight.
We have one constituent signed up, Mr. Willmont.
I am Kenneth Willmont of David Five Hundred and Three, Fourth Avenue, Cumberland, Maryland. I was born and raised in Cumberland. I'm here to speak against legalization of drugs, basically pot or whatever you want to call it. Recently, our government made a program of releasing drug dealers. They call it because all these poor people, that's a nonviolent crime. Now, we start out at the beginning, our justice system has, has a fence. One side is violent crime, the other side is nonviolent. Am I right, Mr. Will? That's what I read in, in the books I've been on. And they got different categories. Now then, let's say, for example, a man goes down on Ballmer Street and robs a bank, sticks a gun in a people's face, and for some reason, he shoots him. One guy's dead, he goes to jail. He committed a crime, a violent crime. Now then, on the other side of the fence, we got a drug dealer down here in South End, probably been dealing for last, who knows how long, selling how many hits of whatever, heroin, crack, PCP, you name it. Here in Allegheny County, you can buy anything you want, from what I've heard from some people that are in, in the business of picking them up. Now then, let's say this guy, one, one drug dealer, he's been there for, let's say, a year. How many hits does he sell in a year? How many people has he put into drug addiction? Now, what is worse, people on drugs, they don't have a life. When they get up in the morning, their first thing is, where am I going to get my next hit? Or next, before that, where am I going to get the money? So what they do, their first thing is, who am I going to rob? Who am I going to beg or steal or, and hawk whatever I can find to get a hit from this drug dealer? So this person, he's no good to himself, he's no good to anybody. He has a living death. It's not a, like the guy who went in the bank and shot somebody. This guy's dead. That's, that's a violent crime. But now, we don't call people who sell drugs, we don't classify that as a violent crime when it should be. Here's a guy who's put people into drug addiction that can't function. You're not a taxpayer, have to take care of. I'm against reducing them people. He's responsible, drug dealers, all over the world, USA here in Cumberland, are responsible for the living death of just millions of people. And they need to be dealt with very hard. If a person's caught drug dealing drugs, he should be a mandatory twenty-five or thirty years in jail. If you put them people in jail, the next guy would, he'd probably think twice before selling it. He'd say, hey, my buddy down the street got thirty years for dealing drugs. I'm not going to do it. That's not the way it is. They get a pat on the butt, and they, they recycle them. Talk to anybody in law, unfortunately, they pick these people up all the time. They recycle through the system. It's, it's a shame that these people are allowed to commit a crime which endangers the lives of everybody in this country. And we need, you people, when you go down state or whatever, say, hey, look, them drug dealers, they're committing a crime worse than a person who shoots somebody in the bank. He only killed one person. A drug dealer, he, he ruins the lives of thousands and thousands of people. And it should, it's, it's a disgrace, the way we're handling drug. We got the problem today with here for the simple reason we have not been dealing with the people who're selling it, bringing it. They bring it in, some days, it's, it's going to be just like China. China had, they had a whole country full of millions of drug addicts. How did they solve it? They put the death penalty on anybody dealing with it. And I don't know what we're going to do today, because I grew up in Cumberland. I went from, Cumberland was the most beautiful place in the state of Maryland on the old east coast. Everybody was working. Now, we're just the opposite. And I can tell you, it all has to do with drugs, alcohol, and all this other junk that people think, well, it's my, my right to do what I want to do, but it's you and I have to pay for it. We have to deal with these people. So you need to go downstate and tell the people down there in Congress, hey, we don't want marijuana up here, and we don't want none of you drug dealers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, like I say, will be no meeting here next week. We will be in Cambridge. The next meeting will be on the seventeenth. Is anyone else who wants to speak? Okay?
Commissioners, and again, just one more reminder, on the seventeenth at three o'clock is our, our scheduled meeting with the delegation. And the time that day may be subject to change, so be prepared to be flexible that day if you can.
With that, meeting's closed.